Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Hubbard County Board meeting. I call this meeting to order. Start out with the agenda approval. Changes?
I don't have any changes.
Okay, you have a motion?
Make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Public input, this part, this public input right here is for items that are not on the agenda. If you want to have a public input for the item number six, which is the public hearing for property tax abatement, you can have your input at that time. So is there any public input for anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
I'll vote you through.
One second.
Okay. Any discussion? The item to poll? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes. Next is employee recognition. We have a few of them here. Highway Department, we have Luke Hartung, engineering worker began the seasonal position on June 12th. Land and Survey, Ryan Miller, our county surveyor, is recognized for 15 years of service on June 16th. In the Natural Resources Management, Parks and Rec, Craig Hansel, natural resource manager and park supervisor slash agriculture inspector is recognized for 35 years of service. That's a good long time. Okay, and then Sheriff, we have Glenn Norris, jail sergeant, is recognized for 10 years of service on June 17th. Christina Sphere, dispatcher jailer began full-time position on June 12th. Karen Zierden, dispatch jailer, is recognized for service from August 31st, 2021 to June 12th, 2023. In social services, we have Amanda Montag, eligibility worker began full-time position on June 20th. And then... And then solid waste, we have Jamie Clark, is recognized for service from November 8th, 2021 to June 16th, 2023. And I believe that's all. Let me thank everybody for their service. Looks like she's ready to clap again. Thank you, Sue.
Happy first day.
And then Highway Department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
One thing on our agenda today, and then we'll give you a project update as well, but I bring to you today a discussion regarding CASA 23. And if you recall back a few years ago, we received a petition on County 23 to stop the use of calcium chloride. And there was various reasons that they brought it to us, corrosion on vehicles, worried about the environmental impacts of the lake being nearby and whatnot. And at that point, you know, there was a significant number of people that had signed the petition. And then the directive was given to the Highway Department to not apply calcium chloride. But that wasn't without the thought of trying something else to try and hold our road together, save on the resources and whatnot. So at that time, we used a base stabilizing agent. But unfortunately, the base stabilizer without some type of a surface treatment doesn't work like calcium chloride does. So we tried it with the intent that we would just kind of leave that. That's a non-chloride product. And yeah, it didn't perform as calcium chloride does for holding the fines on our roadway. So the reason that this comes back to you today was, you know, over the past few years, we have received several complaints about the dust and about the rough road and stuff. But the response that we gave them was that, you know, that we had looked into this and we had listened to the public. And at that point, it was, you know, we're not going to do this, hoping that by 2027, this road was also put into our five-year plan for the eventual grading and paving of the roadway. This is one of our busiest gravels. You know, we're aware of that obviously. And so there is concern from our standpoint too of doing nothing with the road. You see all the dust out there. The dust is our fines leaving the road. Those are the fines that hold our road together. They save on the resources. They also allow us to perform less maintenance. And cost-wise, you know, it's up in the air, but we think that it's a good product, this calcium chloride, that we put on there for those reasons that it does help us save in other areas. And so this time, they sent a, I believe it was an email or a letter to Administrator Cadwell, you know, asking for action on this roadway. They don't care for the dust, obviously, being real close to the road in certain areas, and they don't care for the roughness of it. So we essentially got a split of residents out there, some wanting chloride and some not. So I open it up for discussion if anybody's got any kind of input, kind of looking for some direction or some answers that we can give the public on this roadway. Obviously, with the size of our calcium chloride program that we've got now, we're in favor of using calcium chloride. We've switched a number of miles over to the DuraBlend product, which is a lesser leaching product. We like it. The results are really good. It hangs on the road longer, you know, so that helps for the environmental impacts. A little more expensive, but there are other options, I guess.
Are those people who are against calcium chloride, would they be in favor of DuraBlend?
I don't know. I mean, we talked about it at the last five-year road hearing. There was a significant number of them at that too. And we said, you know, if this roadway was in the plans to eventually be paved, does that change their mind temporarily to get us from here to there? We didn't hear much back. You know, I asked for input from them, didn't hear anything back on it. They were still holding too that they would rather have no chloride, but that's just one group on the roadway. There's a significant number, but there's also people the other way.
So I actually drove this road yesterday. And you are correct, it is dusty and kind of washboardy in certain spots. If you... Would you be interested in moving it up in the five-year plan?
Well, I don't think that's an option. This is... The amount of time that it takes us to deliver projects, especially one of this magnitude, 2027 is about the earliest we can get going on it. We're trying to secure some other funding to help with the cost of that. But also, I mean, there's going to be right-of-way acquisition, there's going to be design work, and it's just, it just takes us that long to prep it, yeah.
Do you know if any of the people complaining about the dust were original petitioners to remove? Have they changed their minds?
The ones that I've spoken to claim they were not. They were not approached to be on the petition, whether that was that, you know... Does the group know where some people stand and you put some people on the petition? I don't know. But they, the ones I've spoken to said, no, they were not approached about the petition.
I've had a couple of people who live on 23 contacted me on this too. One of the gentlemen is a recent new resident, so he doesn't know the process and everything.
Sure.
And you and I talked about his thought that because of the new funding that the state's allowing, that maybe that this could get moved up. But, you know, as you just explained, there's all these things that have to get done prior to this getting done. So yeah, I guess they want something done, it sounds like. And short of paving it now or in the near future, I think our only choice is DuraBlend or calcium chloride. Or magnesium chloride, but then that's probably not what we're using, so that would be a special...
Right, yep. That would be similar to calcium chloride, but a different application. And yeah, we don't have a contract out for that. Our contractor is currently working on the chloride product or the project, I should say, and they would do this road for us. That's not a problem. You know, with as much communication that we've had with the residents out there and the meetings that we've held, I think it's important to give them a voice on this, maybe before a decision is made, but you know, I leave that up to you. We're in favor of the chloride. I guess I don't know what else to say. We put hundreds of thousands of gallons of this stuff down. It does a very nice job. When you leave a road in the situation like CASA 23 is currently, you're at the mercy of the rain. And without it, we're just spinning our wheels out there, trying to maintain. You're going to have this light fluff stuff on top that you can come out and you can dry blade a road, but a little bit of traffic and that's gone. It's just, it's pointless to do it. So you're waiting on the rain and trying to get right out there. But unfortunately, CASA 23 is not our only gravel road. So when we get moisture, we're trying to hit almost our entire system. And so the chloride product pulls all that moisture in and it's able to hold that there. It's just, it just works for what we need it to do. And yeah, unfortunately, it's not a perfect product. You do have the corrosion problems. The whole lake issue, if you listen to the experts on how chloride actually moves, there's probably not as much of a concern about the leaching into the lakes, but you know, I'll leave that to those experts on that. We just like it from a maintenance standpoint and the ability to stretch out, you know, having to go out and blade the roads, and it saves on our resources.
So Jed, how much more expensive would the DuraBlend be? And would that give the same type of coverage?
Oh yeah, we think it gives the same, it actually gives better coverage because it stays longer throughout the year. Yeah, it's about a 20% increase on it. So do you recall what we're at per mile? Thirty, $3,600, $3,800 for the DuraBlend? Versus, you know, $3,000 roughly for the chloride, so not a huge difference, but...
So our goal in bringing this up is to bring to light new conversations that Jed has had with the public on this. But right now, the highway maintenance program on County 23 was directed by the board, you know, a while ago. And what we'd like to do is not manage county roads by mandate and let them be managed by the engineer's office with some amount of, you know, obviously listening to the public on those things. So when he talked to me about this and I talked to a couple of members of the public about this, it seems to me because we have board action telling us what the mandate is on County Road 23, that we're bringing it up to you to ask if we should put this on a future meeting because there are people who want to talk about it. But my recommendation is after we have that future meeting is that we would consider canceling the mandate on that road in favor of letting the Highway Department manage that road along with all the other miles of roads that we have for the best interest of the maintenance and the safety of the roads, right? Now, we certainly have the options of using regular calcium chloride or DuraBlend or, you know, paving. And we have all these projects relative to the maintenance of all those. But I really think we want to consider getting away from managing individual roads by board action, so...
Jed, what does that put on the mandate?
2020.
That's when we had the hearing and when people came to your presentation.
Yep. And at that time, we talked about that base stabilizer, hoping that that would help the situation out. Now we know that it didn't. And, you know, I think that the original thought, you know, when somebody gets hit with that of, here's this group that doesn't want chloride put down, you automatically think, oh, well, that's a cost savings. That's one road that we don't have to worry about. But we know on the flip side of that, that it brings in too many of the ramifications of it, so yeah, exactly.
So our ask today would be consensus of whether we can put this on a future agenda with the idea of withdrawing that mandate on this road in favor of letting the Highway Department manage the roads. We also want, there are people who have said, when are you going to talk about it? We want to be there, right? So we'd like to post it on a future meeting when we're, you know... So we're not recommending action today because we want to have a process and allow people to come in and speak. We wouldn't schedule a public hearing. We would just let them know when it's going to be and let them speak during public comment.
So...
Pardon?
Well, I was just going to say, when Jed did the five-year road plan and we talked about that road, it was in the evening, so people could come. And so I would suggest maybe extending our meeting instead of just having it during the day in case the public... And we could have that portion of the meeting that night.
When do you do your annual five-year plan meeting?
Not until June of '24.
Okay, okay.
And there's also the thought, my thought is like right now, having it this summer because you'll have a lot of summertime residents. They may not be, you know, residents of the county, but they do have property there, and I'm sure they would like to have their input heard too. I'm also wondering, is there a thought of applying it every other year?
You can. What we're finding out, so the calcium chloride did not last like an entire season through. Towards the end of the summer, of course, there's lots of factors that come in with the quality of gravel that you have on the road, the amount of traffic that you have. But we were seeing where that wouldn't last a full cycle. The DuraBlend lasts significantly longer. But really, one year is about what we get out of it. So we're chloriding the same roads year after year after year. You can do it every other year. You're going to have some residual in certain cases, but it won't be anything like a new application. But you could do it, yeah.
I know the county road that I live on hasn't been calcium chlorided this year. And the majority of it is hard pack right now.
Yeah.
So I don't know what benefit there would be to applying more calcium chloride, but I'm not the county engineer.
Yeah, it, what we try and do is ideally, we time it with the new application of gravel, followed by the chloride. That's when you get a really, really good take because then you know what your gradation is on your material. You have the right amount of fines in there. And that's what the chloride is looking for, is those fines to stick together. And so on those roads, if that's how we timed it, you're going to see it hold a little bit better. And it is going to get hard packed down, and it's, yeah, it's really hard in some cases. But nonetheless, you know, you can come through still and hit it with that other application. And it just, as it kind of, you know, infiltrates in a little bit and does what it does, then you've got a good take on it too. We do them every year, but that's not to say that we can't skip a year. I mean, if we're thinking about paving this in 2027 and everything holds to the schedule, sure, we could do it, you know, '23 and '25. Then your construction starts in '27. Yeah, I mean, that's better than what we've currently got.
I'm just thinking maybe that'd be a compromise.
Yep.
We'll find out.
Yeah, great.
Or if you did DuraBlend, would that satisfy everybody?
Not necessarily. It's still a chloride product that's going down. You know, so really, to live on that, if you end up driving on it, especially when it's wet and it gets caked up under the vehicles, you know, we encourage you, you've got to wash your vehicles. The, I think that the typical passenger car that goes in through some of these automated car washes, they get an underspray usually. The vehicles that we really have concerns with is like school buses and such, and they, you don't have a system for that. And so they're on there every day. We're getting a lot of complaints through that and rightfully so. But again, we take the benefits of it over the negatives, yeah.
I guess I kind of land where Administrator Cadwell pointed out, since there's no way to satisfy both. Apparently, it's important that the county's perspective on maintenance be kind of the trump card here and dictate what we do out there.
Yep. I obviously agree. It's, when you think about it, and washboarded conditions create problems. You know, rough roads aren't as safe as smooth roads. It's wear and tear on the vehicles. But as far as the dust, the dust is one of the biggest environmental pollutants that we've got out there. And then when you take, you know, dusty conditions, you're bringing in a serious safety concern with the roadway.
Right, you're losing all your fines too, so...
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a huge cloud behind you. It's...
So you try to accommodate, but it doesn't always, doesn't always work out.
Right.
Of course, I like the idea of having public input too, because, you know, however you manage roads, we got to respond to things the public is saying too. What township does this affect?
This would be Akeley Township.
Just one township?
For this road, yeah, I don't think it gets up into, I think it's all in that township, yeah.
How many miles is that portion of gravel?
It's only two and a half, three miles? Yeah? Not a large stretch.
It seems longer.
It does.
When I left the pavement yesterday and was driving on the gravel.
Yeah.
So people, help people maybe not drive so far, could it be that your public meeting be held in Akeley at the Township Hall?
Sure, yeah.
I would actually caution against scheduling a public meeting just to discuss a road. Because that's kind of the, that's kind of what our ask is, is that the board would rescind the mandate, the direction on that county road and let that conversation happen when we're doing our regular planning with the Highway Department. Because if we set a precedent that we're going to have a public conversation about every decision on a county road, that's all we're going to do is have public comment. Now, that being said, I mean, if the township invited us to come and have a conversation, but here's kind of the deal for this year. If this, they're out calcium chloriding now. If we don't do this relatively quickly, we're not going to get it done this year. And bringing them back after they're not, after they're done working here is going to be expensive, and then that's next year. What, the only thing we promised the public is that they'd have an opportunity to know when and if the board would have a conversation about this. And that could easily be done at a regular meeting in, you know, hopefully the first meeting in July. And not make a big, big deal about it. But the people who want to talk, want to talk, and that's what we have public comment for.
And we know what we're going to hear. We've heard it already. You've got the side that doesn't want it. They don't want it because it's tough on vehicles. They don't want it because of the lake environmental concerns. You've got the other side that doesn't, that does want it. They don't, they're not as worried about the other stuff. They don't want the dust. They don't want the rough roads. They don't want all that dust blowing into their houses. Those are the two sides that we're going to hear. And I think with the interest that this has garnered, a couple phone calls and the entire, both sides of the groups are going to know that if there's going to be a chance for public comment on this, they can submit an email, a letter, they can show up in person prior to that with not a problem. I mean, ideally, they can show up, but yeah, not everybody can probably do that.
So that's what our ask is. Our ask is for you to consider canceling the mandate on this road in favor of letting the engineering department manage the county roads. Because there is a mandate and because it requires board action, it would have to be on a future agenda, which would be the notice. And we would tell the people who are interested that the date that it was going to be discussed. But obviously...
Support that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
So we're looking at July 5th?
Yeah, that Wednesday.
That would be the next available. We put it on that morning.
Is there any way, Jed, you know, where the road comes off 64, right along the lake there, people probably tend to go pretty slow. Most of the dust, I imagine, is generated on the other part of the road when stretches are straight shots. Of applying just the bare minimum near the water?
Sure.
And then the regular rate of application on the rest of the road? That might help some too.
Yeah, actually, the complaints that we're getting come mostly from, by the lake. But you know, something we could do, like there's, there's obviously a lot of residences early on in there, and there's a resort, and there's a public access that you get to, and as you go, you know, your traffic starts to drop off a little bit. I mean, that would be another option is that we do part of the road up to, say, the public access. Maybe we could focus on that, but again...
It still comes down to maintenance though.
It does. It does. I just think you get into a lot of problems trying to appease everybody. It just, it just doesn't work.
We have six more minutes for the public hearing. You said I can support that. That didn't sound like a motion.
I can support the...
Is that your motion?
That wasn't a motion.
Well, he's just looking for consensus to be on the next, next board.
So I just wanted to clarify for Shar, they're not a motion. And for the record too. Okay, now you said you had an update?
Oh, yeah, yeah. On our projects currently, our pavement marking contract with Contractor Sir Lines a lot. They've completed all that work under that contract for striping and restriping. Our gravel surfacing contract in the northern half of the county with Volks Dirt Service is moving right along. They're currently working in the northeast part of the county on County 100 and moving to County Road 101 today. I anticipate them being completed by the middle of next week, right on schedule. Calcium chloride contract with EnviroTech Services for calcium chloride and DuraBlend. That's continuing to work throughout, to work and apply surface treatment throughout the county. They were doing approximately 10 to 12 miles a day, and work under that contract is anticipated to be completed sometime in the second week of July right now, especially with the late start due to road restrictions. Our work with Hawkinson Construction up on County Road 9 for resurfacing, they've tentatively scheduled that work to begin mid-August. On County Road 49 in Akeley on Grayson Avenue, Gladen Construction moved in approximately, well, last Monday, the 12th of June, ahead of schedule, and they're currently working. The road is closed for, through traffic periodically throughout the day and, but is open for local traffic nearly all the time, and we're anticipating all that work being completed by mid-July. Our County Road 13 Bridge, we have a scheduled bid opening for August 30th of this year, and that work will take place next year on that structure over the Clearwater River. Our work on County Road 11982 and then the two projects for Nevis and Todd Township. Knife River completed their paving, shouldering, and the pavement marking was completed last week. On County Road 119, they've got the comeback. We've got some turf establishment work that needs to be completed. And we have a little surfacing issue that has to be looked at on Albert Avenue for Todd Township. So Knife River is supposed to be looking at that with us this week. And we've got a bid opening scheduled for our County Road 7 on July 11th from Dorset all the way up to about a half-mile south at the intersection of County Road 40, so... I think that's about it.
With Akeley Trailhead, that project is opening bids July 17th.
Seventeen, yes, that's right, yeah.
Still planning to get that one done this year too. Anything else?
Nope, that's it, I think. Unless there's any questions or...
We've got a couple more minutes.
If you've got any questions, we're good, so...
So I've got a question from Maria relative to the continuation of the county board appeal. Do you each want a hard copy or do you want an electronic copy on the screen in front of you?
I wrote my hard copy.
She's got a new one.
Oh, she's got a new one?
She's got a new one because this is going to include things that weren't in there relative to...
Electronic is free.
Save paper.
All right, we'll see if we can make that work.
Well, we've got a couple more minutes for the public meeting. I know you're, Corey, you're coming up. How long do you think?
Mine's pretty short.
You're sure? You will? Come on around.
Morning.
Well, good morning.
So I just have one item on the agenda. It's to review and approve 12 timber sales for the July 10th Timber Action. So there's 373.99 acres and 7,044 cords. And comes out to $195,854.10. That's appraised value, so it's competitive bid, so it'll get bid up from there. 39% of the total acres are pine thinning to increase the pine stands, enhance the growth of the pine, so... It's good to see that we're thinning some good pine stands, so... The appraised value per acre is... The, the appraised value per acre is five hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy cents. And we've been seeing very good timber value, values lately, so it, it'll be quite an increase from that. So, just, just asking to approve the twelve tracks for the timber auction.
Just out of curiosity, um, you know, just about every pine harvest that we've seen with the thinning and maybe some bolts out there, but do you have any stands that are reaching maturity for salt timber size?
Uh, we do have a few, it doesn't, I haven't seen it for a while in Hubbard, out of Hubbard County. But, um, eventually if they start dying off, we wanna restart them, stands and get some new pine growing there.
How old would a red pine be at that stage? I'm more familiar with southern pine.
Yep, so usually, you know, pine, red pine can grow into a hundred twenty years old and, uh, you can start seeing, like the drought from the last three years will really affect it and you can see them start to die back. And that's when we know we wanna manage that pine and get the value out of it before, before we lose that value, so. And restart, restart fresh, so.
Any of this about any private land, Corey, do you know?
It, no, no.
It's just one thing to keep in the back of your mind when you do these timber sales. That if it abuts private land, we've had some concerns from private owners on how we go about doing.
Oh, sure, oh, I thought you said about private land, but yeah, no, it does butt up. There are a few that butt up against private land and we contact the private landowner and, uh, we were, actually work with the surveying department and get good, precise lines as good as we can get. Use different section corners.
Problems where people had a lot of visibility, you know, like maybe one of their driveway goes, or the road goes right along one of those, yeah.
Yep, yep, yeah, and we work with, uh, you know, visibility measures, we wanna make sure that nothing looks too, too bad out there and make sure we reserve adequate amount of timber out there to look good.
Do you have a motion to approve? Timber sales?
I'll second.
I'll second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we need a motion to open the public hearing for property tax abatement?
So move.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that, uh, is approved. Um, now we, um, what's the best way, start with public comment or I think maybe start with, uh?
We'll give a, we can give a, a brief overview of what we're asking for and then we can ask if there's public comment.
Okay, that's probably, that's the best way to do it.
Do you, Mary, do you wanna give an update or do you want me to just run through? Okay, okay, so, um, as you can see in, in front of you, Heartland Lakes is developing a fifty-eight unit apartment complex in Park Rapids. Uh, affordable rents, uh, studio, one, two and three bedroom units. Um, this is all uh, out next to the facilities out, out by, uh, West Acres. The, um, the total project development cost is expected to be six point one million dollars with the largest portion of that being, uh, financed locally through Northwoods Bank. Um, the gap there, um, is shown as the nine seventy-nine two nineteen. And that is, uh, the tax abatement proceeds from the city and the county and the school, um, of abating the new tax capacity of this project. We're not capturing, capturing anything that's existing, we're just capturing the tax capacity on this project if, for fifteen years to pay that balance, um, to pay, to pay, basically, in, in basic terms, it's a second mortgage, right? So that's the gap financing on, on this project. So that is the proposal, that is the request, the, um, the, the, um, resolution and the development agreement are also included in this packet. Um, the city of Park Rapids approved, um, well, I'll go back. Early in April, we had a conversation in the city and the county and the school all agreed in, in principle to proceed with the tax abatement, um, plan. And then we've been developing these agreements and, uh, resolutions in the background. The project has been moving on. I think we're still set to, uh, have groundbreaking in summer of twenty-three with occupancy in summer of twenty-four. And the, uh, city of Park Rapids did approve their abatement portion, um, last week. The school board was, uh, supposed to meet last night, but they couldn't because of the new holidays, so they're actually meeting on July tenth. Um, of that nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, the tax capacity is broken up. That it's five hundred and forty-nine from the city, two hundred and seventy-nine from the county and a hundred and fifty from the school over fifteen years. So that is, uh, essentially the, the project and the proposal. Um, do you have any questions before you open to public comment?
Um, I, I guess in a sense I do, but I'd like to have the public comment first and mine is just some clarification on the, the abatement, uh, agreement.
Okay, um, open to public comment, anyone have something to say? And when you do, give your name and, uh, address, please.
Could you pass those down?
Sure.
State your name and address for the record.
My name is Kristen Fake, my address is Akeley Township, two five one six three, County twenty-five. Um, I have three points here. The first, if we would start on page four, your fourth page of the packet. Uh, this is a public hearing. This public hearing was called to consider a resolution granting an abatement on all or a portion of the county's share of property taxes on the property and the inflationary value of the existing facility with a property tax identification number of three two one nine zero zero three zero zero for a period of up to fifteen years. This public hearing was published in the newspaper on the seventh of June. If you continue on into your packet, uh, that contains your resolution, your certified copy of the board minutes, your resolution granting a property tax abatement, one point zero two. Heartland Lakes Development Commission, a Minnesota nonprofit corporation or an affiliate thereof or an entity related thereto. The developer owns the real property in the county located on Finley Street in the city of Park Rapids, Minnesota's city, with a current parcel identification number of three two one nine zero zero five zero zero and legally described in exhibit A attached heretofore as the abatement property. So my first request is this, this public hearing be tabled until proper notice is given to the public. Because the notice was given in the newspaper for an abatement on a property ending zero zero three zero zero, which is actually at Career Path and owned by the HRA. Your resolution is calling for an abatement on property zero zero five zero zero, which is on Finley Street and which is owned by the HLDC. So that is my first request, is a public hearing be tabled until the public be given proper notice to come and speak. My second point is, starts on page one of your packet. Um, talks about conflicts of interests. Minnesota State Statute ten A point zero seven talks about conflicts of interests. But if you actually go to the second page of my packet, this is page twenty-five of your abatement agreement. And it specifically spells out the conflict of interests. No member of the governing body or other official of the city, the county or the school district shall have any financial interest, direct or indirect, in this agreement, the abatement property or the project or any contract, agreement or other transaction contemplated to occur or to be undertaken thereof or with respect thereto. Nor shall any such member of the governing body or other official participate in any decision relating to this agreement, which affects his or her personal interests or the interests of any corporation, partnership or association in which he or she is directly or indirectly, directly interested. We have two, uh, county board members here who are directly interested in this project because they sit on the board of the HLDC. And that's Mr. Delahunt and Ms. Christensen. So at this point, I am asking because of the conflict of interest that those two commissioners recuse themselves from voting if it does go to a vote. And at that point, you won't have a quorum. My last point, if you go to page seven of my packet. This is from the Office of the Minnesota of the Secretary of State. The Heartland Lakes Development Commission was involuntarily dissolved on January twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-three. They have been involuntarily dissolved for almost six months. And so any contract that the Heartland Lakes Development Commission has entered into since January twenty-fifth or any contract that they're asking to enter into will not be legally binding because at this moment in time, they are not a recognized nonprofit corporate entity in the state of Minnesota. This is a certified copy and it was printed off at midnight. So it is current. For those three reasons, I'm requesting that this board table the public hearing and not take any action on this tax abatement resolution in front of you.
Okay, thank you, Kristen, and, um, comment, Jeff?
I can comment on one and two. One is the, um, the notice of abatement of hearing was specific to the project and the, and the planning of abatement for a project. Uh, the actual parcels, et cetera, were, were just handled through zoning, uh, through the, um, by the city of Park Rapids, so those numbers were not really available at that point in time, that was the best information we had at the point in time. The second notice was correct. Um, relative to conflict of interest, conflict of interest, neither Commissioner Delahunt nor Commissioner Christensen have any way of profiting from this. Uh, they serve as, they serve as members of this board on that local board. Um, so that is not what the intent of conflict of interest is, they don't have any personal gain from, uh, from this project. HLDC is the developer, is developing this at no cost. Um, that's why the cost of this project is low, there's no developer overhead on this. If this was being privately developed, you could add fifteen percent to that, to that total. Um, this project is being developed because we obviously have a housing shortage in Minnesota, greater Minnesota, uh, Hubbard County and the city of Park Rapids. And we don't have people, uh, we don't have places for people to move here who wanna work here. We've had that conversation throughout the, the spring, uh, identifying at least three people, three people we have offered positions to at Hubbard County who turned it down because they couldn't find a place to live to be here. So this project is, been vetted, it is needed, it is a first step in creating additional housing in Hubbard County. The objections don't really have anything to do with, with this process, the process is whether or not, um, the housing is needed and whether, uh, we have the ability to, we have the ability to abate that, that tax collection for fifteen years in favor of, of constructing this project. Um, the same objections, as I understand, were raised last week at the, at the city meeting. Uh, and the board, at the city council moved forward anyway.
What about the voluntary dissolution of HLDC?
I don't, I don't have any information on that, I have every reason, I don't, I don't, I don't know where that came from.
It's a certified copy from the state of Minnesota, from the Secretary of State. The receipts are there in your packet.
I, I don't know where that came from, I, as far as I know, I've been sitting on, in as an ex, or as an observer on those meetings. The tax statements have been filed every year, so there's, we have no reason to believe they're not in good standing.
I'd like to add on the conflict of interest comment too, in support of what Jeff said a little bit. Every committee, any one of us commissioners serve on, by the commenter, commenter's standard would be a conflict of interest. Clearly that's not the case. You know, we should be advocating for every, of the needs of every committee we serve on. So by that standard, every committee we serve on, we would have a conflict of interest and we couldn't vote on anything, so.
I don't have a problem with that myself either, it's just I wanna make sure that our, our i's are dotted, t's crossed properly as far as this, uh, the posting and then does this thing from, uh, Secretary of State, is that affected any?
In regards to the Secretary of State paperwork here, I see no reference to HLDC in any of these documents submitted.
It says Heartland Lakes Development Commission.
Heartland Lakes Development Commission listed on the Attorney General's site is shown as being an active, unprofit corporation.
The Secretary of State has involuntarily dissolved it, you have a certified copy in front of you.
This copy says nothing about Heartland Lakes Development Commission. Nowhere in there do I see it listed.
I'm looking at the Attorney General's website that's showing Mary Thompson, one hundred eighth street east, Park Rapids, Economic Development in Hubbard County.
Yeah, I stand corrected, I didn't see that page.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, I don't know how we have conflicting evidence, but everything, everything we're showing here says that they're an active, an active organization.
Okay.
If you look up Minnesota Secretary of State, it shows it is inactive. I've spoken with the Secretary of State.
Okay, are there any other public comments?
Is this, um, something that can be resolved in the short term?
What's, what is that?
With the, with the Secretary of State?
It, as far as I can tell, it's not an issue, it's gotta be, it's gotta be a misunderstanding.
I'm assuming it's paperwork that just has to be filed?
Yeah.
And it was dated January. Uh, I know with, uh, my resort, I was laid a few times when we had operated a resort and it was easy to go and get it renewed. Jeff, you don't believe that's an issue then?
I do not believe that is an issue, Mr. Chair.
All right, any other comments? No more from the public? So what do you?
We would close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
Okay, motion to a close?
Comment at that time then?
Uh, yes, because the next thing I'd ask you to do is consider approving the resolution, so if you have questions relative to that, that would be appropriate during that discussion.
Okay, but do you think, what your, your comment would bring public, public discussion or?
No, it basically has to do with, um, they have, uh, on page fifty-three, I believe it is, one of the last pages, um, they talk about, uh, the, the property being three two point one nine point zero zero five zero zero and then they say that the legal description is under exhibit A when it's actually under exhibit F.
Administrative and can be updated.
That's what I was kinda thinking.
Is it titled, it needs to be updated then?
At the beginning of the, the abatement stuff, it shows it's under exhibit A, uh, exhibit F. But then in the final, uh, um, resolution that we have to go, uh, approve, it's under, uh, it says exhibit A.
Okay.
Yeah, the page. Page fifty-five, excuse me, uh, one oh two, one point zero two, and there it just says, uh, current parcel identification number three two point one nine point zero zero five zero zero, legal and legal description in, in exhibit A, and like I said, it should say exhibit F.
Or the exhibit needs to be renumbered.
You're good at that. Thank you.
But yes, administrative, that can be corrected.
But that, like I said, that's something we should correct before we sign.
Okay. Oh, was that in here for signature today?
I would have to look.
Okay, gotta make sure I get it corrected.
If it is, we'll get a corrected copy.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question to Kristen, since she shared?
Yes.
Are you opposed to this project?
I'm opposed to the county entering into a contract with an entity that no longer is recognized by the Secretary of State.
Thank you.
All right, motion to close public hearing?
Also move.
Have a second? Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. And we're ready for motion, then?
So I would suggest that the item at hand is to consider the resolution authorizing the abatement.
I'll move to spark.
And that's making sure we correct that one title.
Yep. I also, though, had questions about, they show parcel 32.19.00500, but the legal description is, and I don't know how many people in here can read a legal description and figure out where we're at, you know? I just kind of wanted if, if that could be brought up on the screen, I could try to walk it through the way I learned how to do it.
Do we, do we need a second before we continue discussion?
I'll second it, and then we can move forward to discussion.
Not a problem.
Commissioner, what is it you wanted to bring up on the screen?
The parcel 32.19.00500. In the packet, I believe they show.
Where are you? Do you know what page you saw that on?
I guess they don't show it on the, we probably would have to go to the county website, to the maps, and we could find the parcel there. Then just a couple of things I want to clear up, and so we've got here all our t's crossed, and our i's dotted. Do you find it?
Hi. We need a new computer here.
Yeah, I was slow downstairs this morning, too. Now I got to get back to the legal description. Was there a moment ago? Okay. If you could bring the picture of it up on the map. Now, the way I was taught with these legal descriptions, you almost have to go backwards. There you go. So instead of starting with the south 950 feet, you could go down to Section 19, Township 140, North Range 34 West, Hubbard County, Minnesota. Basically, that part there tells you that that's in Henryetta Township, but of course, I'm sure that that part has been annexed into the city of Park Rapids. Then it goes back to the west half of the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter. Well, this kind of, the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter describes a 40-acre parcel. And of course, the southwest quarter, if you were to zoom out, so you got Section 19 right here, so the southwest quarter would involve this parcel, the parcel that Walmart is on, what's to the north and to the east. That would be 160 acres, and that north, and it says it right there, northeast quarter, southeast quarter. So that's describing that parcel there. So then we go back to the beginning, the south 195 feet. So if you look at 32.19.00500, that's basically half of a 40, because the northwest quarter, the southwest quarter is a 40. And a 40-acre parcel is approximately 1,320 feet by 1,320 feet. So now we're going to take the south 495 feet, so take the bottom, which, which, yeah, approximately where the cursor is there, and the west 340. Well, if, half of 320 is 660, so we're looking at about half. So we're looking at this, this corner down in the bottom here. So now, just to, so that my fellow board members and the public kind of know, we're not looking at all of 32.19.00500, we're looking at approximately, I don't know, I didn't calculate it, four, five acres. So I'm fine with that, you know, I don't have any issues there. My question is, Finley Road, I don't see a Finley Road, so I'm assuming that's going to be constructed? And then, who, or is it going to be like a driveway, and is that part of the project?
It's going to be a driveway, a part of the project, under this current proposal. And you'll remember that this entire 00500 is owned by Heartland Lakes for, for future development. So this project is being put there because they have the ability to do that, they have access to utilities, they'll be creating a driveway, which will eventually become, likely become a city street, but for right now, it's going to be a driveway to serve that in order to do this this year and not do this in two years from now. For the same reason that Jed was talking about not being able to advance the street project before 2027.
Okay. And then, and so, and I'm just concerned then about infrastructure, sewer and water, will that be coming from the west, from the south, from the east?
Yeah, come on. So the water and sewer connections, and the zoning and the parcel split, were all approved by the city last week as well.
Yes, and the zoning is along the Walmart parking lot, so it actually comes to the north end of the Walmart, you see the, the yellow square? The infrastructure is right there.
Oh, perfect.
So it's very close, all we have to do is go through. And the other advantage for this property is that there's a really mature growth of trees already blocking Walmart from this place, and where we're actually going to build has virtually no trees. So we don't have to really worry about getting additional growth to block from the west, east, west Walmart coming in.
And it, it drops down there, too, isn't it? Like Walmart's so high, and then you go down to the parcel?
Yeah, there is, there is a little bit of grading that we're going to have to do, and we actually do have to bring in some fills, so that we don't have any water that will leave the site. And where, at the south end there, we will be doing a retention pond to make sure that we don't spill any water. But it's, it's really a fairly ideal site, and the infrastructure is much closer than, than we had hoped, or that we had thought, and it was much closer.
Okay. So I think that was mainly the stuff I have, Section 3.1, excuse me, Section 3.4, on page 13. Okay. I believe I got. I believe it's number one, "The cost of the project shall be paid by the developer, and none of such costs shall be paid by the city, the county, or the school district, except as reimbursed as specifically provided in this agreement." I'm just questioning, we gave Heartland Lakes $300,000, so does that conflict with this paragraph? You know, I don't want to sign, you know, an agreement that we've already.
It's not really part of the development cost of this project? It's, it's the administrative part of the cost of the project, it's not, it's not the construction portion of it.
Okay. Basically, it just says, "The cost of the project shall be paid by the developer, and none of the costs shall be paid by the city, the county, or the school district." And like I say, that's just a question I have. Plus, that was a, plus that was a separate action to create that trust fund and move the money to HLDC, the funds are now HLDC's funds.
Yeah, that, that, it actually predated this, this, it predates, that action predates this agreement, and it should, it's not a conflict.
Anything else, Jed?
Just checking over my notes here. Oh, Exhibit E is blank.
And a brief. We have that, we'll, we'll add that to this, but here's the, here's the uses of the funds, or the sources of the funds in the total development costs. You've seen the, the sources and uses previously.
Yeah. Find Exhibit E again. Okay. Like I say, that was basically the questions I had. I wanted to make sure that this goes through, and that we don't have any hiccups later on, where somebody comes back and says, hey, you did this incorrectly because of this year. Make sure it ducks in, or in a row.
Okay. Are there any other comments, questions? Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, passes. All right.
Clean up the exhibits in there before we, so if you see that in there, don't sign that, we'll get the exhibits cleaned up before we do that.
Okay. All right, Human Resources, Gina.
Good morning, Chair. Members of the board, before you, for Human Resources is a request for personnel policy 16, Section 16.0 and benefits, to approve Section 16.01E, elected officials' county sponsor of major medical coverage. Attached also was a draft of that proposed language that was being requested to be approved for you today. Are there any questions or comments?
Here's a thing where you need to have an attorney read this for you, too.
It was drafted by an attorney?
Guess I should have gone to law school, by the way I was going to have this job.
Right.
I just want to clarify that we are currently, the board members, for every four-year term they serve, they get a year of health coverage after they retire. And I want to, and we're looking at ending that, that policy, and I just want to make sure that that's what we're dealing with here. We're not ending the county's health care that's provided to us.
Right. No, exactly.
While, while we're serving.
So just in the, just in the changed language, this sunsets the policy of the post-employment retirement.
Because, like I say.
But not the while, while-employed health care coverage.
Yeah, because Paragraph Three states, "An individual, an individually newly elected to a county office on or after June 20th shall be entitled to stay on the county's sponsored major health coverage to the extent required, blah, 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 then, but shall be responsible for paying the entire cost of such major health coverage without compensation or subsidy by the county, from the county." So that's, of course, where I had to go back and look at Minnesota Statute 471.61, and I believe that only covers the after-service.
That's Cobra continuation.
Yeah.
So that, what that's saying is, is that anybody new who can, who extends their health coverage beyond their employment would be subject to the rules of the Cobra continuation, and they'd be paying that.
And that's like, that's like my regular job.
Yep.
If, if I continued to have health coverage from them, when I left, I would have to pay for it myself, you know? And then, like I said, and then Paragraph Four kind of says that we are entitled to the county's insurance, so like I say.
That's the attorney language.
If, if Monday wouldn't have been a holiday, I probably would have contacted Jonathan and asked him for his opinion. But I didn't know, so.
I just want to clarify for a comment that you made as well, too, as you read in, in Paragraph Two. This, this policy is referencing the resolution that is not sunsetting. What is sunsetting within the resolution is the term of the benefit of the, the length of it, which in the policy that's drafted in front of you is, that is sunsetting on December 31st of 2023. So as of the end of this year, current elected officials will no longer accrue a term of that benefit. They will retain what they have and follow the resolution with the retainage of those years, but no further years will accrue.
And that's what I had understood when we, when the policy committee going through this. It's almost one of those things where you want to have this copy, and then a copy written by a layperson that everybody could understand. So, thank you.
The summary is that elected officials are, participate in the county's health plan while they're employed. We are sunsetting the policy of there being a post-employment health premium benefit for elected officials.
And do you need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make this motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, I believe, is Fred, Information Technology.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The agenda this morning is to, our current contract for our current website, support and design, has expired, and we're looking at putting out to bid with this new RFP for our new website and design, and looking at putting out to three other, three different companies to help us do that. Part of our initial, and our current company that does our website and design, we would be including them in it also, so that they had an opportunity to bid on it also, so.
And Fred, just as you notice, I'm not picking on you. On page two, under background, population 8,838.
Yeah, I thought I updated that.
Twenty thousand, twenty?
Twenty-two and change.
Twenty-two, yeah.
So, so if that could be corrected.
Yep.
On the whopping 260 employees. And I think that's all I saw.
I wonder if this.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to it, please.
Got a second?
I'll second with the correction.
Okay, any further discussion? Your motion was for the correction.
With the correction.
Okay, then we got the second. Okay, gotta make sure that's clear. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's approved.
So are you settling in good?
What's that?
Are you settling in good?
I think so, yeah. Yeah, a lot of things, it's working, working all good. And we just got, I don't know, our storage unit up and going, too, that we had approved in the last meeting, so. Thank you.
All right, Administrator?
The next item we have is Paul Heduk from MCIT, who's going to give you an update on the 2023 report to members. an update on the twenty twenty-three report to members.
Morning.
Morning.
I do have handouts, would you rather have the handouts or the electronic file?
I got, got it on electronic.
Okay.
You could just cue me, Paul, when we need to go from page to page.
I will do that. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for letting me be part of your meeting to talk about the twenty twenty-three MCIT report to Hubbard County. I'm Paul Hayduk, an MCIT risk management consultant, and we typically do these reports every other year to coincide with the election so we can welcome new Commissioners, but we don't have that situation here, uh, which is really pretty unusual as we've been going around the state, there's quite a few new Commissioners, so, um, a lot of this may be a, a little bit of just a reminder for you. Uh, because of the pandemic, though, we haven't been out visiting Members like this in this format since twenty nineteen, so we're a whole election cycle behind. And this is my second round of reporting to county boards, and I've been with MCIT for five years. As you may know, MCIT is a joint powers, public entity, risk-sharing pool, and not an insurance company, and so we're sensitive to Members' needs with regard to coverage and services. And back in the seventies, affordable coverage was almost impossible for counties to find, and so Commissioners decided to pool their insurance money and provide coverage and services directly. And now forty-four years later, your MCIT board is made up of Commissioners, auditors, and administrators, they come from where you are and they operate MCIT with an eye towards your needs because your needs are their needs. And we cover eighty-one of the eighty-seven Minnesota counties and over three hundred and ninety other county-related entities like soil and water conservation districts, ag societies, historical societies, lake improvement districts, and so on. The six counties that we don't cover, Anoka, Dakota, Hennepin, Olmsted, Ramsey, and St. Louis, all self-insure. And Hubbard County joined MCIT in nineteen eighty, so the very beginning, so as, as a charter member and a charter partner of MCIT, you share in the forty-four years of success. And that's primarily been driven by MCIT's dedication to addressing the changing needs of Members and Members' willingness to reduce the frequency and severity of claims, and I would add not treating MCIT coverage and services as a commodity. Now, if we flip to page two, in the blue box, uh, there's a little discussion of cyber coverage, and cyber coverage in twenty twenty-three is a real win. In August of twenty-two, we did not think we were going to be able to provide cyber coverage to Members, and not only are we providing it this year, but it's better than it was in twenty twenty-two, and we didn't have to charge a separate contribution for it, and there was no individual member underwriting criteria as well. And those were the goals, when we set out to put together the twenty twenty-three cyber coverage, we wanted to make sure it was good quality coverage, that it fit within the existing contribution structure, and that there was no individual underwriting requirement. So it's really a win-win in twenty twenty-three. I want to move to the dividend, which is the yellow box, everyone likes talking about the dividend because it feels sort of like a tax refund, but the dividend in twenty twenty-two was all from the workers' compensation division, the total was seven million dollars, and you can see the county portion here, but to, to clarify, the dividend looks back, so we look at the claims that we've already received and our investment results, and the board and the actuary determine if that fund is sufficient to cover those claims that we're going to have to pay. And if it's more than sufficient, then they make the determination to return funds to Members and ultimately to the public. And there's one sentence in here that's very important, and I'll, I'll read it, the only, um, thing I'm going to read out of the whole report, but I want to make sure that I get it right. MCIT only issues a dividend when it is actuarially sound and fiscally prudent, and that's a great segue to talking about the rates, which is the blue box next to the dividend, because the rates are also actuarially determined. We ask Members to provide your exposure information, payroll, budgets, building projects, cars, uh, trucks, all of those things, and the actuary and the board use that to determine what we're going to have to pay in the coming year. And then we prepare the, the contribution charges based on that, and would be really nice if the actuary could add something so that we can always declare a dividend, but that's not the way the board operates. The board is looking to make sure that there are stable long-term rates for Members. If you go back to what I said on page one, MCIT was born because affordable insurance just wasn't available, so the board's goal is to make sure that you have, uh, information and you can budget for it, and you're going to have that good quality coverage at stable rates, long-term, and that we never have to come back and say, we need more money to keep the lights on at MCIT. Now, on page two, I want to talk a little, I mean, page three, I want to talk a little bit about claims, and we'll start at the top here with workers' compensation claims. This is aggregate data, so it's not Hubbard County data, it's all of MCIT, looking at the top departments for both frequency and severity. So on the frequency side, or whether the number of claims, they're coming from sheriff and jail operations, highway, and hospitals and nursing homes. On the severity side, or where the dollars are, sheriff and jail operations, highway, and hospitals and nursing homes. Those same three groups are both, uh, giving us the frequency and severity, and if we step back and look at why that might be, they're all twenty-four, seven operations, and they're typically doing dangerous things, so it makes some sense that we're seeing both the number of claims and the dollars come from there as well. Now, an individual member, in particular, an individual county can affect their workers' compensation contribution through the workers' compensation experience modification factor, which is a mouthful, so we've referred to that as the mod, and that's the yellow band on the right-hand side, but every, um, the, the workers' compensation contribution is developed because every job is in a class, and every class has a rate on that class, and multiplying the payroll in the class times the rate gives you the base contribution. And if we didn't have the experience modification factor, that would be your contribution. But the experience modification factor takes into consideration when you're above or below average, so if your experience mod is less than one, you're doing better than average and you pay less contribution. If it's more than one, you're doing poorer than average and you pay more in contribution. So the, um, experience mod for Hubbard County is one point one, so you're, you're paying almost eleven percent more than you would otherwise if your experience modification factor was one, and you can see that that's impacting twenty twenty-three to the tune of twenty-two thousand dollars. And if we look back four years, you can see that in twenty nineteen, it was below one, so something came into your claim history that was likely a bad claim or, or a couple bad claims, and it's affected your experience mod since then. A claim impacts the mod for three years, so one bad claim is going to affect three subs- subsequent mods, and then it's going to fall off the calculation. So what's going on here is likely that there was a, a bad claim, a severe claim, and, um, and quite possibly, when it dropped off, something else came behind it. So it's, it's something that can be dealt with, um, having, uh, your, a focus on safety is really, uh, the way to impact the experience mod. And one other thing I wanted to say about workers' compensation, the Workers' Compensation Reinsurance Association reinsures workers' compensation coverage in Minnesota by law, and in twenty twenty-two, the WCR A declared a dividend, and they sent MCIT eleven point three million dollars of the surplus that they had, and the MCIT board decided to return nine point six million of that to Members, and so the Hubbard County portion of that surplus from the WCR A was a hundred and seventy-five thousand and five dollars. So that came in August of, of twenty twenty-two, and it's important to not count on that because these have happened from the WCR A in the past, but they are not regular and they're not frequent, and so we have no idea when we might get another one. There was somewhat of a surprise that it, uh, was declared in twenty twenty-two. Moving to the property, casualty coverages in those, those second two graphs, here we're looking at the lines of coverage, um, both again in frequency and severity, auto, property, and general liability is where we're getting the number of claims, and then the dollars are coming from auto, property, and law enforcement liability. For auto claims, we cover eleven thousand six hundred vehicles and trailers statewide, so that's a pretty big exposure base, and if you've tried to get bodywork done on a vehicle, you know that that's become very expensive, and that's certainly showing up in these numbers. For property claims, we cover seven point five billion dollars of property statewide, and in particular, the last two years of storms are really impacting the dollar number that you see here. And then for law enforcement liability, unfortunately, Minnesota counties haven't been able to avoid the nationwide trend in expenses coming out of law enforcement liability. Turning to page four, I want to talk about the services that you get from MCIT, and these services are all part of your contribution, so there's no additional charge for loss control service or risk management consultation. Your loss control consultant is Nick Lindberg, and I'm the risk management consultant, and Nick and I provide services to help Members reduce the frequency and severity of claims, and the first picture here on the upper left-hand corner is my colleague Tom, working with the county and the county fair, because there, the county owns the land and the buildings, and the fair board owns everything else. And if they have a storm, you want to make sure that everything is on the appropriate schedule, so the claim representative doesn't say, I'm sorry you had a loss, but it wasn't scheduled, so it's not covered. So Tom is working with them to make sure that everything that they want covered in that footprint is covered, so that if there's a claim, they would get reimbursed for that. The next picture down is an example of an in-person training session, and we do webinars and seminars and hybrid sessions, things like our coverage review, workers' compensation workshops, risk management workshops, presentations on government data practices, building a positive safety culture, and land use decisions, and recently, we did a hybrid session for county attorneys, talking about cybersecurity and the importance of cybersecurity for our Members, and we brought, um, some of the consultants that we use on the cybersecurity claim side, along with, uh, MCIT coverage expertise, to put on this informational seminar for the county attorneys, and it was actually a little bit scary and eye-opening because one of the consultants took us to the dark web where there was county data for sale. It wasn't Minnesota county data, but it was just county data that was there for sale. So rather than holding it hostage and, and trying to get a ransom from whoever's data it was, they just have it there for whoever wants to buy it and use it for whatever they're going to use it. Sorry, that, that, that was, uh, very eye-opening to see how readily available that data is. In the upper right-hand corner, we have examples of our award-winning prevention and awareness materials. This is also cyber-related, the, um, essentials of data security for public entities and the cybersecurity self-assessment, so there's a little bit of a, of a theme going through here, there's, there's a lot of cyber-related things, um, but that's really the, the hot area for us currently, and what these resources are intended to do is provide you a roadmap to best practices, because you can have the most sophisticated technical security, and it can be defeated by an employee falling for a phishing scam, or maybe even just leaving the server room door unlocked. So it doesn't take a lot to break through that security, no matter how sophisticated it is, and so the cybersecurity self-assessment in particular is thirty-five questions so that you can determine if you're in the best practice on that issue right down the line, and is the same kind of questions that an underwriter would ask. And as I said earlier, in twenty twenty-three, we didn't ask Members for information on their data security. That was this year. We don't know what next year is going to bring. The cyber insurance area is so dynamic, we have no idea whether we'll be coming to you in the fall saying, we need a bunch of information on what you're doing. So the better shape you're in, the, the closer to best practice you are in all of these areas, number one is going to make your data more secure, which is our number one goal, and a side benefit of that is that you're better able to qualify for the coverage. So it, it's really important that Members use the self-assessment to work towards, um, being best practice in these areas and, and identify the places where you need to shore it up. The next picture is, um, about the services and memberships that come with your MCIT membership, that, again, they are part of, excuse me, the contribution that you already pay. The Employee Assistance Program, the Minnesota Safety Council, our boiler and pressure vessel inspection services, and the EAP really is a risk management tool, and that's why we want to highlight it, because employees who are having their issues at home or at work dealt with are more productive, they're safer, less likely to injure themselves or others or damage property, and the EAP provides them with up to six sessions on any one topic, and it's geared towards elected officials, law enforcement personnel, managers, supervisors, employees, and their immediate families. It's no cost, it's confidential, and it's local, so you're not dealing with somebody in St. Paul, and it is, the data shows that it's really an effective tool, and that's why we have it as part of your risk management program, is because it's an effective risk management tool. The last section is answering a question that we often get, which is, what can we as Commissioners do to support MCIT and the, the continuation of the program? And the number one thing that comes to mind is using your coverage knowledge in your decision-making. So if you had a cyber breach, the thing you should do is to report that to MCIT right away, so that we can bring the expertise that we have on retainer there to help you figure out what happened, the extent of the breach, what you need to do to respond, and hopefully even who's responsible for it. It also helps you preserve your coverage by reporting it right away, but the knee-jerk reaction might be, well, we have off-site data, we'll just restore our data and go on, but in doing that, you might obliterate all the tracks of whoever hacked into your system, and also eliminate your opportunity to see how to stop it in the future. So it's really important that, um, you take the steps to make sure that you have coverage and also that you deal with the, the crime scene that your, your system could be. Another one is to encourage training for your employees, particularly safety training, and participate yourselves if you can, uh, because what you pay attention to, they're going to pay attention to, that's just human nature, if you're interested in it, they're going to be interested in it. And engaging MCIT, what you're doing right now, um, having me be part of your board meeting, that's another great way to continue the partnership that we have, and lastly, I want to say that on behalf of the MCIT Board of Directors and your MCIT service team, thank you for your continued support of MCIT.
One question, I noticed, um, workers' comp rates down ten percent, does that mean there's fewer accidents on the job?
Uh, it's, it's a combination, so it's, it's less frequency and probably less severity, too.
So the other thing is Heritage used to be under the county, correct, on the, on the workman's comp, and they now are off on their own, and so that was part of the reason, I believe, that the workman's comp is down.
Well, the, the rates that we're talking about here, those are MCIT total, so that, that might have had an impact on it, but.
I thought you were talking about Hubbard County.
No, no, that was total.
Yeah, so it's, it's really the, the statewide trend, and part of that may be because there, there's fewer, um, workers' comp claims that are COVID-related, so we're, we're sort of coming down the hill on that. That's also partly why the rates are lower.
And then maybe my next question, what, um, how the cyber coverage, that's, that's now self-insured by the MCIT?
Uh, actually, um, Consolidated Reinsurance Limited, which is our, um, our overall liability reinsurer, is also, they have a, a cyber section as well, so we have a bigger, uh, self-insured retention than we did before, our, our previous coverage was dollar one. So yeah, we have more skin in the game on, on claims than we did, uh, but there still is reinsurance above it.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Administrator's report?
Very briefly, we've got a busy schedule, um, the balance is today and tomorrow. Attorney Frieden is going to be back for the, uh, closed session, um, some point. He said he'd be back by, uh, ten forty-five or eleven o'clock in order to, in order to, um, provide that session. Um, he's kind of balancing responsibilities down in court admin today. We also have, uh, continuation of the County Board of Appeal and Equalization as soon as we're done with this meeting, until one o'clock today, or whatever amount of time we need for a break, because at one o'clock, the Heritage Living Center Board is meeting in here and interviewing, uh, two of the respondents, um, to the request for proposal for management services, so that's our hard stop, it's sometime before one o'clock today. And then we had also agreed that we would continue, knowing we weren't going to get this done in two hours today, at nine o'clock tomorrow morning, to finish the, uh, administrative portion of the County Board of Appeal and Equalization, and tomorrow morning, we have to start and we have to go until we're done, because tomorrow's, uh, ten days since the beginning of the, of the, uh, hearing, so, um, we will have to finish that up tomorrow. We also tonight have, uh, at six o'clock, the, uh, public hearing on the proposed capital improvement plan, and we'll give a brief presentation about that and take public comment and ask, ask and answer questions. I don't actually intend to ask us to approve the plan, um, at the end of the meeting tonight, I'll put that on the next regular agenda, uh, if that's the consensus after. I'll put that on the next regular agenda, if that's the consensus after the conversation today, tonight.
So is there, would the board like to meet after Heritage? To continue the County Board of Adjustment Equalization meeting?
Today at four, rather than, because you're coming back at six o'clock anyway?
I can't meet before five. I have to go home, but my dog's out.
I had an unexpected committee meeting with the library, probably going to be around two thirty or so.
Just thinking about time management.
Yep. I can appreciate that, but do we need to lock till three, do you think, for the Heritage Board?
We have a presentation at one and a presentation at two.
Yeah, you're right.
So yeah, whatever conversation is, it might be four o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
That would be all I have, unless you have questions.
He said ten forty-five?
Ten forty-five or eleven, so I don't know if you want to do your committee reports and then take a recess?
I'm just trying to, I need to have a little break here.
Or take a break now until Jonathan's available, and then come in and do committee reports at the end of the meeting. However, however you prefer.
Well, I need to take a break right now, unless Sharon wants to take over.
No, that's fine. We can take a break.
We could take a break now, and then we come back. If Jonathan's not here, we could start our committee reports.
Sure, okay.
How long a break we gonna take?
Let's do, say, ten minutes? Would that be enough? Just in case he's here at ten forty-five, we can do five minutes of it, or?
Want to go first?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Let's see. Also about the Northwest Jubinal Center. Of course, we're going through the budget again, that time of year. And I'm on that, because I'm on the executive board, I'm also on the budget committee. Everything looks pretty good. We're sitting strong as a organization. We've looked at rates that other facilities in the state are charging. They're primarily lower than, most of them, and we have some knowledge that they're raising their rates. And in turn, we are raising ours. And you've got to keep up with employee costs and everything else. And the only way you can do that is increase your rates. If there's less clients coming in, then of course you don't collect as much dollars and stuff like that, too. There is, I was hoping to get, and I haven't gotten it. There was an interview down on Minnesota Public Radio about our kitchen, our kitchen staff, and the work that they've done and stuff like that. I was hoping to have that and then actually give it to Jeff, so he could give it to all you folks. Because the concern we have on the Northwest Jubinal Board is the woman who runs our kitchens, we don't want to lose her. You want to talk about her because she's doing such a fantastic job, but then we don't want her to get sniped either. And that would be terrible. And then also this year, it's our fiftieth anniversary. We're talking about having a celebration in August, or July, excuse me, July. Going to have, ask some of the former board members to come, and former staff and stuff like that. So it's, like I said, kind of nice, fifty years in business. And it's one of those, another one of those rewarding committees that I'm on, because of the lives that we changed. And hopefully, you know, that's all you can do is try it. Let's see, another committee, of course, I had was Solid Waste of Boston. Which was part of the six-county group that uses the facility out there. Let's see. We went through recyclables, cardboard's at thirty-five dollars a pound. Historically, it's between thirty-five and two hundred and fifteen, excuse me, thirty-five dollars a ton. And historically, it ranges from thirty-five to two hundred and fifteen, so as you can see, we're on the low end. Aluminum is at sixty-nine cents a pound. And there again, historically, it is thirty-nine to a dollar twenty-five a pound. Loose metal ranges from five to a hundred and twenty-five dollars a ton. And currently, we're at thirty dollars a ton. Plastics ranged from anywhere from ten to three hundred and fifty dollars. A ton, I believe it is. I see, I don't have that written down here. And we're currently at a hundred and five. Let's see, steam sales are constant, pretty much same as last year, just down slightly, or excuse me, up just a little bit from last year. The landfill tonnage is down a little bit from 2022. What they feel, a lot of that is because line three has been completed, and there's no longer being, line three is no longer being, sending anything to the landfill. Let's see, talked about the mine county group that's looking at the C and D, or construction and demolition landfills. The state is, of course, not permitting any unwind facility or landfills anymore. Josh did have Jeff send out the three hundred and eighty-three page. I just wanted to show you folks. I did get a hard copy. This sure seems like more than three hundred and eighty-three pages. I've read a lot of it.
So Ted, does any of that break down inside the liner? Does it just stay there?
Some of it will. Well, because a lot of the construction stuff, of course, it won't be hazardous, or it won't be household stuff. It'll be from construction projects.
Right, so I'm wondering if they, how does any of that break down?
I don't think it really does, in a sense.
Yeah, so it's just there kind of forever?
What they're concerned about, of course, is the stuff that leaches from it.
Right.
So the plan is, and StanTech drew this up, the state of Minnesota hasn't done anything yet, in a sense. I mean, we have no guidance. And, but yet, permits are going to be running out, and we have to do something, so we want to be prepared. I think Josh came to us and mentioned about the hub and spoke, where we, the North Transfer Station, may become one of the hubs on the... where we, the north transfer station may become one of the hubs on the east side of the group. Uh, and Foster, or excuse, yeah, Foster would still be, or Gentilly, uh, where the landfill is. That might be the, the west part. Um, and going back to this, there's, of course, it covers all nine counties. So the other eight counties, I didn't do a whole lot of research on, on those. Um, just for the matter of time, having to have this done, read, you know, a week before the, the meeting. But there's, uh, it sounds like we've got really good participation. Um, so the, the idea would be is at the spokes and at the hub, where, uh, this demolition is brought in, it would be gone through. And if there's usable boards and other recyclable materials or reusable materials, those would get pulled out of the stream. And then the rest, if, if you're a spoke, then your, your stuff would have to be trucked to one of the hubs. And.
So then would that be, you know, like the Henrietta Mall is now? Would those boards and stuff just be put in places like that?
Could be, yeah.
Cause it's not something the county would resell?
I think so. It made it sound like they would be available to the public, kinda like where we crush concrete. You know, and have it available type of a thing. Um, but then going back to the lined landfills, of course, it would, it would be in a, in a sense of bowl shade. The debris would go in there, there would be some colorings. But then when it rained, that's where it would come through and it would leach out the, the manganese and the boron and these kind of things that we have issues with. That would, the liner would catch that. Uh, the current one at, uh, Gentilly has a 40,000 gallon tank. So it goes into there, then that is siphoned out of there and taken to a treatment plant to try to take all the contaminants out. And, uh, I'm not sure where, where the contaminants then go from there. Um, but that's, and I can see, I can kinda see it, you know, if, in, versus having all these little unlined, uh, uh, landfills and all this stuff leaching. I mean, we have this issue with our south transfer station, you know, and I, I can imagine that on a massive scale. But also with the state kinda dragging their feet and if all of a sudden these landfills aren't, and I'm assuming they're gonna have to extend some of the permits? Um, because what would be the alternative if residents didn't have a place to put this stuff? Are we all of a sudden gonna start seeing this in the backyards? You know, or on the south 40 or the back 40 of somebody's property or something? And, and we don't want that.
Yeah.
And let's see, since Jonathan is here.
Sorry, it's okay, you're early.
Um.
Just on time.
One other thing I have is the Hubbard correction meeting, but we really don't have much to discuss there.
Just that we, yeah, we met and, you know, it's, we'll have to meet at a regular basis to, just to communicate with, with that, that area and the courts. Cause they do have an effect on our long-term planning and what their needs maybe enter into our decision process sometimes, so.
Well, I guess we just touched one more time. Uh, HRDC had a meeting last Thursday. Uh, I and some of the HRDC, uh, our executive director and that, reached out to the mayors of Hubbard County, invited them. Um, started off the evening with, uh, mini golf. Then we had a, a cookout and then we had a regular meeting. Um, I, I, I kinda wish at least one or two of the Hubbard County mayors would have come, but I understand it's June, I mean, and, I mean, look at my schedule. And this is just for the county stuff. So I kinda understand, you know, maybe if we were to get more advanced notice, maybe we could participate, have more participation. Um, I did, I ended up getting there late because of my regular job, but I did get in the final group, uh, which included, uh, George Prince, the mayor of Bemidji. Um, Kell Larson, who represents, uh, cities, small cities in Clearwater County. Uh, Bob, the mayor of Shevlin, and I don't remember Bob's last name. And Commissioner Gosbick, uh, from Hubbard County. And, uh, I was hoping to do the county proud. But I, I started off strong. I was under par up to the first five holes and then, uh, it all, the wheels came off. But it was a good evening.
Putters, where the money's made, Ted.
You drive for show and putt for bill. So my dad, my dad was a golf coach and, uh, I used to caddy for him. It was, it was, I, I wanted to, you know, do proud, you know, make him proud even though he's passed away. Um, but at, the first year of all, I looked good. The last 12. So I ended up like in third place.
Okay, that's pretty good. Unless there was only three of you golfing.
I was, I was third out of the five in our group.
In the middle.
That's all I have.
Uh, Jonathan, do you have time for us to finish, uh, public, I mean, committee?
I've got done with court, so absolutely.
Oh, okay. Well, then we'll just continue on with committee reports.
Okay, I only have one and it goes along with, uh, the district two meeting and a, uh, district two is a presentation of how AMC aided. And, um, the marijuana bill actually, it was, according to Julie Ring, what actually was put in there as restrictions was thankful, uh, thanks went to Matt from AMC. Cause there were no restrictions on there. And so, um, two days prior to that, I had just attended a webinar for HIP from Tall Cop, Jermaine Galloway. And he talked about the trends in marijuana. And so, um, what Minnesota passed and Matt from AMC agreed will only be the starting point and the, and the restrictions will get less and less because of the 21 states that have legalized marijuana, that is the trend. We, uh, one of the things AMC got into it is that the state will take 50% of the tax and the counties will take 50%, but the social costs are gonna far away what we get in the tax. And that, um, once marijuana is, or that THC stuff is legalized, younger and younger kids use it because once it's legalized for adults, they just assume that it's safe to use. And then, um, this webinar was really interesting. It went into the different things and why. I gotta bring my notes cause I accidentally left them at home. So I'll share more on this next time. But I was really thankful for AMC and what they worked behind the scenes to, it seems to at least get restrictions for, you know, we can have, we'll only, because of our population, will be allowed two in the county. And so, um, what we have to work at, that was the best they could do, so. But I, um, the district two, I really appreciated the entire packet that AMC put together about how they had helped with county priorities and then what was passed in relation to those.
I don't have too much, uh, fair's coming up, July 11th through the 15th, and it is Tuesday through Saturday. I think Tom or somebody mentioned that it was different than.
And the road should be done.
Instead of Sunday, so.
Oh.
I know that the Baja racing and the derby are on Saturday now. Both on Saturday instead of Sunday, so. That'll give people time to, you know, pack up and stuff on Sunday then, which would be nice. Um, extension committee is Thursday night. We've had three applicants for the open position and my intent is to get some feedback from the committee members. And then, uh, probably the next board may even be able to come board with a recommendation to serve, fill the vacancy there. Also, well, we heard about heritage and you heard about HLTC today, pretty much those things. So, uh, nothing really new on that.
That's it. Okay, um, well, I got the Kitsikami Library. Um, we approved at a, a meeting last week, the collection policy. And that has to do with the materials in, that they have on the shelves and also events or anything like that. My computer just went blank. And, uh, hold on. And, um, let's see, I really screwed up my train of thought here. Uh, yeah, right, it's, that collection policy is approved, has to do with, uh, a patron can appeal what's, what's on the shelves or an event that's occurring. And, um, and the policy is on the library's website along with a form. Or if you said, if the patron thinks there's a gap in, in what they have on, uh, in their collections, they can appeal that. And I think I went over the whole process last time, starts with the branch library, then goes to the director. And then after that, if that doesn't satisfy him, it comes to the library board. And a simple majority says yes or no to whatever their appeal is. Um, and then we, uh, laid our last meeting, approved the draft budget for 2024. Um, would kinda like to get Melissa on the July work session, if that's possible? If there's room for it?
I think so.
Okay, I'll let her know. And then at the AMC meeting, and maybe for the benefit of two that weren't there, there is something interesting that Julie Ring brought up and it has to do, uh, with a, a Supreme Court decision, uh, the case of Tyler versus Hennepin.
Yeah.
Uh, which will affect us. Um, but that, uh, maybe give a, a money figure, just throw any, a number out. Say, uh, this property was, um, sold by the county cause they took it back because of not paying taxes and it was worth, they got 40,000 for it, but this person only owed 20,000. Uh, well, the county kept that and state law allowed it. But now the, uh, Supreme Court said, no, 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 that 20,000 goes to the owner. And that could have, uh, you know, how far back will that go? Cause, um, there may be statute of limitations that apply or if not, then maybe the, uh, the legislature may need to see if they can come up with some.
Didn't you say there was a county already that had received a call? That was many years ago, wondering if they could get their money? So they were wondering how far back.
Yeah, how far back? You'd think statute of limitations would apply somewhere here. I don't know, but.
We've already received calls.
Have you?
Yeah, we might be that county. I'm assuming a lot of counties have received calls.
Yeah.
Would this be something in the legislature could pass something that says we have to move back so many years?
Get on the record here. Um, it, it is an interesting, uh, case right now. Obviously, the Supreme Court's ruling, the United States Supreme Court ruling does put Minnesota statute, um, not in line with the ruling ultimately. I mean, we've been following the statute since its inception, which does not allow us to return money, um, to, to landowners. There's a lot of questions, statute of limitations on how far back is a very good question. The legislature will need to look at that, but the courts will as well, um, when there are lawsuits that are brought on how far back, what, what statute of limitations, um, which exact number applies. There's a lot of legal things in there. The other, the biggest issue or another big issue is gonna be, how do we find out who the owner, where they are? I mean, most of the time when we're tax forfeiting, we have, we haven't had contact with the person. If we did, if we knew where they were, we had a contact information, they would pay their taxes if they wanted to. Uh, so how, if we get an over, if we get an overage, how do we find out where this person is? There, there's no answer to that question either. Um, there's a rule from the Supreme Court that at this point, the state has not come up with a way to actually implement. So we'll, we'll see what the legislature does. At a minimum, they're gonna need to change the statute, uh, because it's not in line with that case.
And the administrator in Cass County, Joss, I think he brought up a good point that going forward, um, counties need to keep really good records of all their expenses.
Yep, administrative costs.
So you hold back whatever you really are entitled to.
And I know Kate has a really good job here, so I, yeah, but agreed, yes.
And one more thing I forgot to mention, we were the only county so far that AMC has met with that questioned the property tax valuations in the state of Minnesota. We brought that up and they were just, no one else was asking.
Really?
Yeah, that was shocking to me. Well, they weren't having, like Cass County said, we had hardly anybody show up this year to question their valuations.
Really?
Yeah.
I thought Wadena County had, when I read the newspaper article about the issues they were having in Wadena County, it sounded exactly like what we were having too.
But, but this was, no one had brought it forth to AMC yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Hmm. And that's all I have. Um, next item, meetings to note, department head meeting. Whose turn is it? Your turn? Okay. Ted? Otherwise, we're ready for the closed session. Do we have a motion to close?
I'll move to the floor.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Jonathan. Yes.
You got us live again?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion on anything?
Want to do anything else? We don't have the votes. Yeah. They do if there's no votes.
Okay. There's nothing else, then we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second. We adjourn.
Is it even worth our time to even meet with Maria, really?